Okay, I've just been receiving text messages saying that they can't hear through YouTube. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Madam Chair, that second was me, Mr. Perez Verdia.
Okay, thank you. So, we received a report that the sound on YouTube is not working. Okay, and if IT would please go ahead and address that issue. Ms. Zalatell, you're in the queue to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep this very brief. I think members spoke, and I spoke, as to why this emergency ordinance makes sense, and that we were very clear on those reasons, and the reason for doing, taking the action to address the public health emergency. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. If folks in the audience would please refrain from shouting. Mr. Dunbar?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm getting some messages here that sound is now back working on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Okay, seeing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote. Actually, Ms. Kennedy, I see that you have placed yourself in the queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I hope that the Assembly members will seriously reconsider in an effort to not override the veto of the mayor. One of the things that I think has become abundantly clear, especially just in the last few hours, is how divisive this community is over this issue. And the only thing that this particular override does is fuel that fire. One of the things that I'm really concerned about is the fact that there are criteria to be met in order for this ordinance to basically end. And I find that to be relatively, almost irrelevant, criteria that would basically hold the municipality somewhat hostage in terms of how any hospital would determine whether or not they are still in that standard of care crisis mode. And that just makes it really difficult to come up with any clear and decisive manner by which we would know whether or not that threshold was being met or not. So, that was one of my hesitations for even seeing this ordinance passed to begin with. But I think now that the mayor has seen some of that as well, and is looking at how this really does impact the community, I don't believe that it is wise by any means to try to overrule it. I certainly understand some people's desire to want to go against anything that the mayor does. We know that that's fairly prevalent by many members on this body, so they certainly have the right to say that. But just in terms of really what is in the best interest of this community, overriding a veto by the mayor of something of this magnitude is not a good idea. So, I would hope that there would not be much support for this override, and hopefully people will try to go along a more rational basis to see how we can truly help this community get through some of the challenges that this virus is presenting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Constant, you're in the queue next.
Thank you. I just would like to defend the reputation of myself and others. I'm not doing this to spite the mayor because he objects. I'm doing this because it's the right thing to do.
Folks in the audience, please refrain from shouting. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to state that my motivation for bringing this emergency ordinance forward had nothing to do with a power grab or politics in any way. It was all to preserve the health of the members of this community and save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Seeing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote on the motion to override the veto. A yes vote overrides the veto, a no vote does not. We will be conducting a voice vote in which I will call the member's name, and the clerk will record the vote. Mr. Weddleton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Allard, how do you vote?
100% no.
Mr. Peterson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Constant, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Zalatell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Perez Verdia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. LaFrance, how do you vote?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, do you have the results of the vote?
Yes, Madam Chair. The vote is nine to two.
The motion to override the veto passes nine to two. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for immediate reconsideration.
Second.
Second.
The motion for immediate reconsideration has been made by Ms. Rivera and seconded by Ms. Zalatell. Members may proceed to vote on the motion for immediate reconsideration. A yes vote brings the motion back before us. A no vote does not. Mr. Weddleton, how do you vote on the motion to reconsider?
No.
Ms. Allard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Rivera, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Kennedy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Constant, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Zalatell, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Dunbar, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Perez Verdia, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Quinn Davidson, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. LaFrance, how do you vote?
No.
Madam Clerk, do you have the results of the vote?
Madam Chair, the motion for immediate reconsideration failed nine to two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion to reconsider has failed nine to two.
Madam Chair, this is Ms. Allard.
Ms. Allard, do you have a point of order or information?
I have a point of admiration, please.
What is your procedural question, Ms. Allard?
My question is, could you please explain to the public if they can or cannot testify on this new ordinance, each and every single person that chooses to? Or is this a, let me think, I want to phrase my words. Or if they've already testified they can't. But since this is a new ordinance, I believe they can. And if you can just get some information on that and put it out, please.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. I believe the question is, may members of the public testify on the emergency ordinance? Was that your question?
Yes.
The answer is no. The emergency ordinance has already passed, and public testimony is not a part of that. We are now on, and the veto has been overridden. We are now to audience participation. If you would like to participate, please come forward, state your name for the record, the area of town in which you live. You will have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Assembly. Thank you, Mayor Bronson. Today, I certainly like to propose the mask curriculum, which is an approach to discuss and discover the purpose of mandatory masks, as a way to better understand the world we live in. The purpose of the mask curriculum is to help children to identify the barrage of media lies that are being downloaded into your child's mind by the CDC, WHO, and compulsory schools. Your children will soon understand and find empowerment through this experience of tyranny, because they will locate places where they can help. Where we are now will not last forever. But if we want a brighter future, we had better build it ourselves. These children need to see a full human face. The solution is so simple. As we all know, just stop cooperating. When we stop cooperating as a conscious community, whether local or global, the mandatory mask will disappear, because we need to see a full human face, which is fundamental. Has your child ever asked these four questions? Why do we have to wear these masks? And what did you tell them? Example, A, the government has used force, excuse me, the government has forced us to do it. I don't like it, but it's a temporary thing. B, we don't have to wear masks. If you don't want to, you don't have to. You own your body, and I trust you want the best for it. When can I take the mask off? Examples. Now, you don't have to wear that. Who owns your body? You do. Or B, when would you like to take it off? Now? Okay, do it. Anytime another person wants to push their agenda on you for your own safety is a great opportunity to think for yourself. What can we, excuse me, what can we say to our children about the business of vaccines and fear campaigns? We can tell them the truth or our best representation of it. Who is making us wear masks? Example, A, some people use coercion, and they don't understand that you have natural rights to our life, freedom, and property. B, government officials acting like they have superhuman power over us, sometimes use force intimidation. That's not what kind people do. But the government is based on these tactics, so they constantly violate our freedoms. Or C, criminals use government as a tool of power to control other people and make them do things against our will. This is a bad system. So, that's why we are learning about self-reliance, because one day we will not be cooperating with any coercive organizations. Your children might even consider, you might even consider informing your children of truths that could affect their future, and our children need that information to prepare for a future that is on the horizon. It may be helpful to share some concepts with them. Ultimately, I believe freedom and voluntary relationships will be widespread and abundant again, Mr. Mayor. And I wasn't finished. I had a fourth question.
Thank you for your participation. And I just want to note that we are noticed until 5:30 this evening. Welcome. Sir, you will have three minutes.
Madam Chair, point of order, please.
Ms. Allard, what is your point of order?
You just said that we're going to listen to testimony until 5:30, and I want to make a motion to extend public testimony until testimony is done.
Second.
I apologize. I can't hear you speaking to me. Yes, I'm here.
To clarify, we're doing audience participation and not public testimony, and your motion will need to be to a time certain?
Okay, thank you. I'll come back at that moment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue until you come back with your motion. Welcome, sir.
Jordan Horry, District Four, on behalf of Self. Well, I have a little quote here from a man named Bill Hicks with a few of my own embellishments. It goes like this. "The world is like a ride in an amusement park, and when you choose to go on it, you think it's real, because that's how powerful our minds are. The ride goes up and down, around and around, and it has thrills and chills, and it's very brightly colored, and it's very loud, and it's fun for a while. Many people have been on the ride a long time, and they begin to wonder, hey, is this real, or is this just a ride?" And other people have remembered. And they come back to us, and they say, hey, don't worry, don't be afraid, ever, because this is just a ride. And we kill those people. We kill them. Shut him up. I've got a lot invested in this ride. Shut him up. Look at my furrows of worry. Look at my big bank account and my family. This has to be real. It's just a ride, though. But we always kill the good guys who try to tell us that. You ever notice? And let the demons run amok. But it doesn't matter, because it's just a ride, and we can change it anytime we want. It's only a choice, no effort, no work, no job, no savings of money, just a simple choice, right now, between love and fear. The eyes of fear want you to put bigger locks on your doors, buy guns, wear masks. Close yourself off. The eyes of love instead see us all as one. Here's what we can do right now to change the world into a better ride. Take all that money we spend on weapons and defenses each year, take all that money we spent on a virus, and instead spend it feeding and clothing and educating the poor of the world, which you would pay for many times over, not one human being excluded. And we could explore space together, both inner and outer, forever in peace. But to those of you who voted for this mask law in the dead of night, you voted to live in fear. You voted to treat us as children who don't know how to steward their own lives. You voted to try and take our strength away. But guess what? You can never take away the strength of the human spirit. In each of the darkest times in our history, when it seemed inevitable that evil would win or humanity would fall asunder, at the precipice, we changed. We stood up. We took in and claimed our own power. Darkness gave way to light. Evil gave way to good. Fear surrendered to strength and courage. So, you want to live in fear? Fine, don't change. We will. We will live in strength and stand up in our authority as free men and women. You seek to continue to treat us as children? Fine, we simply won't play your game. Here's how we, as adults, are going to render your unjust and fear-based law toothless and neutered. This paperwork right here states that I have created a new religion called the Anchorage Doesn't Speak for, the Assembly Doesn't Speak for Anchorage Religion. One of our tenants is that our church is the entire city, and you've made exceptions to religious assemblies. Anyone who wants to sign up can. I am the president of such a religion. Your masks are now moot. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Allard?
Thank you. I'd like to move to extend public participation until 7:30, please.
What was the time?
Second. 7:30, please. I believe that would be enough time for everybody to participate, but I'm not sure. I'm not there to see.
The motion has been made by Ms. Allard to extend audience participation to 7:30 PM, and it's been seconded by Ms. Kennedy. We will go ahead and proceed with a voice vote, which will be recorded by the clerk. Mr. Weddleton, on the motion to extend to 7:30?
Yes.
Ms. Allard, on the motion to extend?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Rivera, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Kennedy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Constant, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Zalatell, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Dunbar, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Perez Verdia, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Quinn Davidson, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. LaFrance, how do you vote?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, what is the result of the vote? Do you have the results of the vote to extend?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. The result of the vote is it fails seven to four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the remainder of audience participation. Please come forward, state your name for the record and area of town in which you live. Welcome.
Rachel Culvard. My representatives are Megan Felix. I didn't have tape prepared.
Madam Chair, I can't hear.
I'm not speaking yet.
I believe it's muted.
That's on me.
Ms. Allard, the member, the public is not yet speaking.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Recall Meg?
Oh, we're getting to that. So, I'm going to ask everybody, if you request information from the municipal clerk, that you do that with grace and a little bit of humility. These people, you can hear it in their voice, that they are getting a little bit beat up. And so I'm going to ask you to be charitable with our neighbors. Okay? They do hard work for the people, and we should be nice to them for that. So, from them, I want to thank the clerk. I did receive my ballot. I do live in District Four, and I'm going to share that with you all right now. So, in case you were wondering at home what you needed to do to help end this tyranny, this is what you do. As a Marine, I would fight to the death for your right to a private ballot. But I'm going to share mine. Got my envelopes, got my sticker. Honestly, this is the best part. Distractions. Oh, look, a ballot. Awesome sauce. Whoever left the pen, thank you. I did forget that. Shall Meg Zalatell be recalled from the Office of Assembly? Yes.
Yeah!
Overwhelmingly yes.
There you go. People at home, that's what you do. You vote yes. This is the one nonviolent thing that we still have left to us, and until they take everything away, we will act nonviolently. Vote. Oh, yeah, one more thing. Check with the clerk on who decided that they needed to move into District Four at the last minute.
Thank you for your participation. We have time for one more individual. If you come forward.
Anybody can. Anybody can go to the clerk.
Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live. Thank you.
No pressure. My name is Ruth Mariner. I live in District Six. My representatives are LaFrance and Mr. Weddleton. I'm here to support Mayor Dave Bronson and the veto. I'm here to tell Mr. Weddleton and Ms. LaFrance that I will be actively opposing your reelection, and I'd like to tell you why. The last time I gave testimony in this chamber, I came before you expecting to actually be heard and listened to and observed. I was hopeful that you would take into consideration my plea, that you would consider the economic viability of the city of Anchorage. I have kids who want to live here one day, and they need jobs, and they need affordable housing. You guys have made a partisan decision for this mask mandate, and it will cripple our city's economy. I'm a property manager. I manage 67 apartments. I have all kinds of people who live in these properties, and they come to me because they're afraid they're going to lose their job. It runs the gamut. I'm not going to go there. I get to be the last one. You guys have lied to the public. I was deeply disappointed when I learned that while I was out of state, Mr. Perez Verdia called some kind of emergency order, and you voted in the dead of night, because what you have to say and your opinion has not been compelling to the public. In the light of day, we should be hearing from you compelling reasons why you believe the mask mandate works. I have listened to hundreds of public testimonies given in this chamber over the last two weeks from people a lot smarter than I am. Very compelling. And yet, nine of you can't think independently enough to engage with those members of the public who gave you information and science-based understanding. It's shocking that in a group this educated, I don't hear a variety of thought. You also guaranteed that you would debate this issue, and I didn't hear any debate.
You did. You did.
I didn't. Maybe I missed it. But I didn't hear you debating among yourselves, the conversations that were occurring in this chamber from members of this community. So, I'm deeply disappointed. I'm concerned that this assembly has lost trust with So, from them, I want to thank the clerk. I did receive my ballot. I do live in District 4, and I'm going to share that with you all right now. So, in case you were wondering at home what you needed to do to help end this tyranny, this is what you do. As a Marine, I would fight to the death for your right to a private ballot. But I'm going to share mine. Got my envelopes, got my sticker. Honestly, this is the best part. Distractions. Oh, look, a ballot. Awesome sauce. Whoever left the pen, thank you. I did forget that. Shall Meg Zalatell be recalled from Office of Assembly? Yes. There you go. People at home, that's what you do. You vote yes. This is the one nonviolent thing that we still have left to us, and until they take everything away, we will act nonviolently. Vote. Oh, yeah, one more thing. Check with the clerk on who decided that they needed to move into District 4 at the last minute.
Thank you for your participation. We have time for one more individual, if you come forward. Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live. Thank you.
No pressure. My name is Ruth Mariner. I live in District 6. My representatives are LaFrance and Mr. Weddleton. I'm here to support Mayor Dave Bronson and the veto. I'm here to tell Mr. Weddleton and Ms. LaFrance that I will be actively opposing your reelection, and I'd like to tell you why. The last time I gave testimony in this chamber, I came before you expecting to actually be heard and listened to and observed. I was hopeful that you would take into consideration my plea, that you would consider the economic viability of the city of Anchorage. I have kids who want to live here one day, and they need jobs, and they need affordable housing. You guys have made a partisan decision for this mask mandate, and it will cripple our city's economy. I'm a property manager. I manage 67 apartments. I have all kinds of people who live in these properties, and they come to me because they're afraid they're going to lose their job. It runs the gamut. I'm not going to go there. I get to be the last one. You guys have lied to the public. I was deeply disappointed when I learned that while I was out of state, Mr. Perez Verdia called some kind of emergency order, and you voted in the dead of night, because what you have to say and your opinion has not been compelling to the public. In the light of day, we should be hearing from you compelling reasons why you believe the mask mandate works. I have listened to hundreds of public testimonies given in this chamber over the last two weeks from people a lot smarter than I am, very compelling. And yet, nine of you can't think independently enough to engage with those members of the public who gave you information and science-based understanding. It's shocking that in a group this educated, I don't hear a variety of thought. You also guaranteed that you would debate this issue, and I didn't hear any debate. I didn't. Maybe I missed it, but I didn't hear you debating among yourselves the conversations that were occurring in this chamber from members of this community. So, I'm deeply disappointed. I'm concerned that this assembly has lost trust with the public. You represent people, people who don't agree with you, and you didn't listen very well. I would also like to end with this. The people who have opposed this ordinance have been mischaracterized. I have been called selfish. I've been called rude. I've been called arrogant. I've been called mean. I've been called a death wisher. Just because we disagree, nobody in this room is being denied the right to wear a mask if they choose. This is my body and my choice.
We are adjourned. We are at the end of our time, and we are adjourned.